All of us. And then the other thing at the bottom of your screen, there is a little window that says chat. And as during the presentation, if you have some specific question about an issue that we're talking about, then put it in the chat and we can try to answer those questions. At the end of our time, there'll be a couple announcements. I know that Sandy Gritzer has an announcement from the outreach committee for a food drive collection. Sandy, don't let me forget about that. And then announcement about next week's topic. So I want to welcome all of you. And if there are those who are from outside the parish, welcome to you. We're so happy to have you with us. And I especially want to welcome Dr. John Palin, who's with us tonight. He had to stay up late tonight to be with us because he's on the east coast in Washington DC. John is a foreign service officer and senior health advisor with the State Department. John's background was, his degree was at Johns Hopkins University in clinical medicine and public health. And he's been in that practice for 35 years. 15 years ago, he joined USAID, part of the State Department. He can clarify these things that I mess up in managing policy and progress, especially with low income people. His work has taken him all over the world. And I asked him to give us a perspective and understanding of epidemiology and a pandemic, both from a global as well as a local perspective. I'm happy to be able to call John a friend for 30 years and happy that grateful that he could join us. So welcome, John.
Thank you, Father Kasper, and glad to be here this evening. Good evening yourselves. So I thought I could take you through a couple. Father Kasper mentioned this, a couple of different aspects, starting with maybe a larger global perspective, like where's the world? And then kind of coming more to a little bit more focused on the United States. And then look at some very particular issues that might be of interest or concern, such as openings, you know, what does it mean when we open something up like a school or a workplace and so forth? So I thought I'd go from big and kind of narrow into the smaller or the more practical things that we are experiencing on a day to day basis. So I tend, because of being, you know, kind of a clinical epidemiologist, I tend to use a lot of data. And so that's kind of what I'm going to use this evening. If it's too much, you know, just, you know, send something to the chat room and say, you know, just stop using all these numbers, it's driving me crazy or whatever. And I'll be, I'll be more than happy to do that. But I tend to use numbers to make a point and hopefully I can make those clearly with this presentation. And I will try to.
Our community, our community believes in science, John.
Okay, good. I was a little concerned about that. I know you do. John is your pastor. It's all about the numbers. Great, okay, super. So good. And so the other thing is, I was thinking I would like to do like 15 minutes and then go to the chat room. If that's all right. So rather than stopping and starting, I'll just kind of give a presentation and then I'll stop. And then we can do questions if that, if that works for everyone. That's unreasonable.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. All right. So I'm going to be looking a little bit on another screen because I've got some stuff on another screen that I'm using. So you might see my eyes wandering. It's not that I'm bored, but I'm just kind of working on a couple of things. So just start with the bigger picture globally. There are a little over 7 million cases that have been reported today of COVID infected individuals, both adults and children, and approximately a little over 400,000 deaths. So comment I'm going to make, you'll hear it a little later, is that probably is a significant underreporting, both of new infections or infections and deaths. And I'll point out a couple of places where we have problems really tracking really what is happening in terms of epidemics in certain countries. There's about 100,000 new cases that are reported each day. That number is going up quite significantly. I'll talk a little bit more about that. In terms of where countries are in rankings, the United States has been, excuse me, the number one, as we like to be, the number one of all nations reporting both cases and deaths. So we have reported slightly over 2 million cases as of today and of approximately 113,000 deaths. So we have the largest number by twice that of the second nation reporting, which is Brazil. So Brazil and right behind them is Russia. Both of them are reporting a little over 500,000 to 600,000 cases. Brazil's reporting about 38,000 deaths and Russia's reporting 6,000. So I just want to pull these two countries aside, just to say this is a case, both cases are significant cases of underreporting. Brazil probably not as much in their incidence of infection, but clearly in their deaths. Because we know that death rates are much higher than that. Russia has just recently come out of a surge and they have now public practices in place to slow, to bend the curve back down, but they're not reporting on deaths as much as we would expect either. So again, pointing out a couple of countries, we think actually there are much larger numbers that are somewhere under, under those that are clearly not reported. Right after Russia is the UK, but more importantly, right after the UK is India. So if you're familiar with the Indian continent, it's actually quite a large continent, large, you know, urban, very dense urban areas, very little public health hygienic practices. They are reporting currently only 276,000 cases and a little over 7,000 deaths. So this is the place where things are really going to get out of control very quickly. And this is where we really expect to see a lot of the numbers if they start reporting. And I'll talk a little bit about why countries don't report. But this is a case where, once they get the reporting systems in place, they're probably going to be the country that will take, overtake the United States in terms of the total number that they will probably have reported. One thing that I do want to mention, Spain and Italy are in there. They actually have relatively similar numbers, about 250,000 each with about 30 to 40,000 deaths, which is what we'd seen them for a while. So they're actually controlling their epidemic. You've already probably heard about Italy's ability to do a fair amount of public health control at this point. But let me just say South Korea. So if you remember, South Korea was one of those countries that was hit hard very early on. Some of it was because of institutional issues, much like us with nursing homes, there with their religious programs. They are currently 56th in line of countries when they have a total report of 11,000 cases with 276 deaths. So it's really important in looking at that, we know their numbers are correct. And it kind of again reflects a strong public health response to an emerging epidemic. So they had a lot of testing that was immediately available, contact tracing, follow up with a lot of social distancing for a variety of reasons. So just kind of give you that overview. I think it's helpful to see that all countries are kind of, although they're ranked differently, they're actually moving in different directions and they may not always be reflecting accurately what is happening in the epidemic in their, in their countries themselves. So there are a couple of things just to keep in mind when you think about these global dynamics. And it's pretty much countries that tend to have a couple of factors or characteristics where it's hard to gauge what's the epidemic there. So I'm going to use Sub-Saharan Africa where I spend a lot of my time and the systems there that are difficult in that they are not set up to do this type of mass testing and mass reporting. So a couple of things about low income countries and South American countries similar to that. And also obviously Asian countries similar to this, is that many of them really lack any testing or laboratory capacity. So for example, in South Africa, in Sub-Saharan Africa, we have four labs that do COVID testing. One in Nigeria, two in South Africa and one in Tanzania. So you see that there's a really lack of infrastructure or testing capacity. And along with that, they often don't have strong reporting or surveillance system. So even if you tested someone who was positive, the way the test was reported up to the national level is often a paper trail, if that is often lost. So in many of the countries that we're working in, particularly the ones that don't have these strong public health systems, we often don't have the means to test and we don't have the ways to really look at data because their data systems tend to be really weak. The other thing is that generally, when you see outbreaks, particularly large outbreaks, and Ebola is a good example of this, in one of these countries, it often creates a kind of a pandemic scare, an epidemic scare, where individuals who are even sick won't go to the hospital because they think they'll get even sicker at the hospital. So they stay in the communities and by staying in the communities, they actually spread the disease or the transmit disease even faster. So there's a really concern with individuals going to healthcare sites because those sites tend to be poorly staffed, poorly managed, and they're afraid they're going to get even sicker. And on the flip side of that, providers don't like going into these sites because they often don't have PPE and other things to protect them. So you have a real abandonment of the medical structure, although it's very weak. It's actually not used particularly well and tends to just breed transmission even further. So just kind of giving you a little bit of that experience of what it's like. The second factor aside from public health systems and health delivery programs is the political condition of the system. So we know that countries do not report or significantly underreport for a number of reasons. We deal with that in the State Department quite often. So one example is Tanzania, very large Eastern African country. Reported very early on, stopped reporting about a month ago and claimed that they have no more epidemic. Actually, they said that God has cured them and they're ready for tourists to come back again. So they have started all the tourist activity to come back from there. So as obviously in the State Department, we know that's not correct. So you have to also be aware that there are political, and Brazil is actually very similar to that. There is real concerns about the tourist industry. So the Brazilian government is probably withholding information based on that to a certain extent as well. So you have to think a little bit about the political environment that you're in and how well their, the willingness to report information. We saw that in the AIDS epidemic as well. Many of the, of countries didn't report their AIDS cases that they're afraid that it would scare tourists or visitors away from the country. So just be aware that's kind of part of the overall dynamic of the global. We can talk about travel and who's going to open borders if you want to. But I thought I'd just kind of give you a little bit of a sign that some countries are definitely going up. Others are going down. There's a lot of uncertainty right now. So I wanted to just go briefly and talk about what's happening here in the United States. So as I said, there is about a little over 2 million cases, 113,000 deaths that are reported. We're in a little bit of an upswing and I'll mention why that's the case. Yesterday, we had a little over 17,000 new cases reported and almost 1,000 deaths. So we're running about 1,000 deaths a day, if you can picture that. That's kind of where we've been over the last month or so. And we're actually on a bit of an upswing. The way that we look at information, we often kind of categorize it based on age and race and so forth. So I'll just give you briefly what we're seeing in that. The most, the age range that's most common in terms of where most cases seem to be at this point are 18 to 44. So we see the largest number, almost a little over third of HIV, of COVID positive cases being reported within that age range. A much smaller number over 65, but as we'll talk about shortly, the death rates, mortality rates are much higher than that. But we do have a very large number of healthy adults that are walking around either asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic within that age, 18 to 44. We see also that there's somewhat interesting, as we've heard before, disproportionate impact in minority communities on COVID. The whites probably make up, I would say probably about a third and maybe a little more than a third, maybe 40%. Right behind them at about 35% are Hispanics. So there's a very large number of Hispanics that are COVID positive in the total number that we have. And right behind them, about 22% are black non-Hispanics. So you see almost 60 plus percent of those who are infected with COVID are either Hispanic or black non-Hispanic, which is, I think, the issue that we've been seeing and struggling with is, you know, what are the factors that put these populations at risk? And we can talk a little bit more about those if you're interested. But clearly they are factors. Race and ethnicity is a factor in, at least what we're seeing currently in the epidemic. In terms of healthcare workers, we've had a little over 72,000 healthcare workers infected with 383 deaths. So clearly, healthcare workers have been impacted. They have not, I'm seeing the numbers of deaths as we initially thought, but still there's a very large number of them that have been impacted. So let me just talk a little bit about this point about cases increasing, I mentioned earlier. So there are 14 states that are reporting increased numbers of cases. So if you look at their, a diagram of their reported cases on a weekly basis, you see that these are diagrams that show that there's an upswing in the total numbers of cases per day or per week. The 14, of the 14 states, the largest ones are Missouri, Nevada, North Carolina, Florida, Arizona and Texas. All of them, plus some of the minor states, Alaska, Arkansas, Mississippi, Iowa and Utah are the early openers. So these are the states that decided pretty much in April, either early or mid-April, that they were no longer going to stay locked down and closed. They have opened. And so what we're now seeing is this delayed increase of infection or community transmission. So some of the concerns we've had before about giving up on some of the social distancing or other practices are actually demonstrating, in fact, they are creating some increase in the overall epidemic. In one state, it's over 100% increase over this period of time. As you know, in California, you have a regional opening policy. You have about 70,000 cases of COVID with, I think, something close to 3,000 deaths or 2,800 deaths total. Your regional opening policy is actually very similar to what CDC put in place, which is the grading criteria for the three-stage opening, which is really based in regions. So the regions decide how they want to move through those three stages based on the specific criteria that are laid out. And I could talk with you about those criteria and what they mean in terms of how these regions or states have to show that they're having decreased both clinical illness as well as infections over these 14-day periods in order to move to the next stage, the next stage and the next stage. And it's not too complicated, but interestingly enough, frankly, all the states that are showing increases have not gone through that kind of staging criteria, nor do they adhere to the CDC guidelines. So that's kind of, so let me just flip now a little bit to kind of clinical transmission. And then I'm just going to go to a couple of areas and then we'll just open up and we can talk about it a little bit. So in terms of clinical transmissions, so I think everybody knows the general, if once you get infected, if you were going to show symptoms, it's usually about a, it's about a five to seven day window, up to 14 days. It's kind of the outlier, but it's usually median time is something around seven or eight days. So that's kind of in that window. There are proportions of people that won't show symptoms and we'll talk about that in a minute. It's not clear what that number is, but there are individuals that don't show symptoms, yet they're still able to transmit. So that's an important thing because that's what relates to community transmission. That's what makes controlling this epidemic so difficult. But in terms of the presentation of the symptoms, we've probably heard a lot about it. Fever, cough, fatigue are really kind of the predominant ones. Then there's shortness of breath, you know, loss of taste and smell. Some, you know, some relate to headaches, some vomiting, diarrhea, a number of things that are less common. But the most common ones, up to 80, 90% tend to be fever, cough and fatigue. Shortness of breath happens, it tends to happen if you're more advanced in your illness. As I said, there are asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic infections. Again, we don't really have the denominator of how many people are infected because we don't do broad-based testing. So we're not exactly sure how many asymptomatic people are actually out there. But some of the studies that we have from China show that for adults, it could be up to 40%. And for children, young children, it could be similar, if not a little bit less. So the asymptomatic pool can be quite large. I think the general estimate is that we're probably talking about a quarter, not quite a half. So maybe 20, 25% people who do get infected will never show symptoms, the majority will. Of those who show symptoms, 80% of them will be mild. So there'll be mild symptoms or very mild pneumonia. The, and this is, this is really based on the studies that have come out of China and some that, some that have come, some out of the United States as well. About 14% of them will be severe, where you actually will have difficulty breathing, really reduce lung function, but you're going to make it. It's just going to take a fair amount of recovery to get you through. And then about 5% will be critical overall, which will be serious kind of multi-organ system dysfunction or shutdown. And what, what creates that risk in that progression to a critical illness or death are certain factors, and I think you've already heard about many of them. One is age, you know, the risk of high mortality rates and clinical progression, particularly for individuals over 70 years old, is extremely high, right? Even over 60 years old. So you're really getting, age becomes an important factor because of the immune functions and just the overall resiliency of your system. You do see chronic illnesses play a major part. It tends to be the type of, it tends to be more cardiac illness. And so diabetes and hypertension and obesity do play a part, but cardiac illness seems to be, and pulmonary conditions seem to be the bigger risk factors as opposed to other chronic illnesses. And there are reasons for that, that we can talk about if you're, if you're interested in that. So overall, and one of the questions is, can you get reinfected? Once you've been infected once, you get reinfected again, you know, like regular sea flus, flu season? And we don't know, you know, we don't know whether the virus can be fully cleared from the system over time and whether a person can get reinfected in a way that would cause clinical illness again. And there are some thoughts that is probably unlikely, but at this point is still one of, one of the question marks. And there's lots and lots of question marks and you'll hear, you'll hear a lot about those. There are very specific ways that providers are learning how to treat. And one of the things that has come up is that there's all these very unusual types of presentations. You may have heard about kind of the toxic shock Kawasaki type of syndrome for children, which is rare, but it does happen. There were seven or eight cases of that in New York. Get these very odd types of presentations in adults where your toes turn red and pink or blue, where it's actually kind of a breakdown of your peripheral circulatory system. And that's, so there are things that we're learning clinically, both symptoms and manifestations of the disease that we didn't know before. So there's a lot of new knowledge that's coming out in terms of the diagnosis and then ultimately treatment. So let me just spend two very brief moments on treatment and then I'm going to get on a couple of issues. So what do we have in terms of treatment? So there is no FDA-approved treatment at this point, right? Remdesivir, which is an antiviral drug, is the one that's farthest along. And the FDA approved it for emergency use or authorization. Is it very limited in its availability? So it's not basically used much, but it is being used. And they're starting the larger clinical trials on it to determine whether it's effective or not. The earlier studies have shown that it reduces the length of stay in hospitals, hospitalization and the time period to recovery for mild illness. It doesn't, it hasn't been studied for moderate or advanced disease at this point. But it does show a slight improvement, but it's certainly not a cure. And it's not something that I think we're going to hang our hat on in the long term. There's hydroxychloroquine, I think we've all heard about what the president's taking. I hope he's not taking it anymore. Maybe we should, maybe not. Anyways, it's not something that is recommended by the FDA. There are various studies that are not showing very much favorability. There was a published study in The Lancet that was just retracted because of the analysis of the results. But overall, we're not looking at chloroquine or hydroxychloroquine as something that's looking too promising to use. Now, that's been mixed with a number of other drugs, some antibiotics, like is this, is this, is this throw my sin and others that may actually work a little better. But again, it's not going to be something that we're going to see as major recovery. The major one that's kind of interesting that people are starting to look at more seriously is convalescent plasma. Convalescent plasma is a passive way of giving someone antibodies from another person. So I get infected, I develop antibodies to fight the virus. I fight it successfully, you get infected, I take my plasma and I give it to you so you can have the benefits of my antibodies immediately. So there's a lot of work going on on this. And actually, the Red Cross is looking for donors for persons who've been exposed and been through recovery to help with some of those studies for convalescent plasma. So that's something that's happening. It's not happening, it's not widespread in terms of treatment. Some of the studies that are happening do show considerable promise, particularly with the moderate severely ill individuals. And there are a lot, actually, there are quite a few other drugs that are going under study. The one group that is actually particularly important are kind of the immune modulators. So when you get infected, your immune system, you know, grabs itself up and it shoots out cytokines, which are an interleukin product that is meant to fight the virus. Okay, so it does a couple of things with your parts of your antibodies and it's used to fight the virus, attack it. There is a problem sometimes when your immune system gets too revved up, that it starts attacking itself. So one of the, one of the thoughts of why this virus is so deadly, particularly on the cardiac and the pulmonary system, is that actually this cytokine storm, the overreaction of the immune system is actually now attacking your cardiac muscles and your pulmonary system, your VLI. So they're starting to use drugs that calm the immune response down to see if they can get control over what is the cytokine storm. So that's actually been shown in small studies as being relatively effective. And it's probably something that's going to come up later this year in terms of some sort of emergency approval. So I just wanted, I wanted to mention those. And let me just take you through a couple of topic areas and then I'll just stop. So where are we with vaccines? So in the beginning of May, we had the first phase one results from a vaccine that Boston-based company Moderna published. And it showed, so phase one is just, is it toxic? Really, is it reactive? And it's not, it's mildly toxic, that's your, it showed effectiveness in humans that it wasn't. It was targeted to that virus and it wasn't toxic. And it looked like, at least in Petri dish, it looked like it actually did neutralize. So that was the first step. And that's what got Anthony Fauci, the director of NIH, so excited. So the United States government has put all of its really big money behind three large pharmaceutical firms to create this vaccine. So we in the United States have three large investments that we're moving forward. Inovia, Moderna and Pfizer are all in stage two to stage three clinical trials. So they all have drugs or they all have vaccines out there. They're all recruiting for clients and they're all looking at trying to get the phase four, which is the major long-term clinical trial, started by this fall so they can have results out by the beginning of the year. There's another group in University of Oxford that actually has used a new technique to develop virus, develop vaccine. It's a reverse RNA technique and some of you may or may not know about it. Anyways, it produces the vaccine at a much faster rate and you use a smaller amount of the vaccine to create the immune response. They actually think they can get this vaccine out before the end of the year. So we're not sure whether that's going to happen or not. But the technology they're using is extremely advanced and they, so what they've done, which is really interesting, is they're, so they're funded by a large Chinese firm. They have decided that they're going to take all of the vaccine they produce and give it to low-income countries. So therefore, not for not cost. So unlike the US pharmaceutical firms that will sell their vaccines, they have decided they're going to send all their vaccines to middle and low-income countries to protect them from further progression, which is interesting. You can think about some of the ethics behind that. That's kind of an interesting way for them to approach this. And then later on, they'll charge, but their first batches over the first year will be focused on the most vulnerable countries and communities. And then later on, they'll charge, but their first batches over the first year will be focused on the most vulnerable countries and communities. So that's kind of where we are. That, I think we found that, we're a lot, so I'm not a virologist, to be very clear, but I think what we found is that the virus is not, it's not a difficult target, it's not an easy target, but it's not that difficult. And I think that that's why they found abilities to neutralize it relatively quickly. And so the hope of getting a vaccine out this, in the next six to eight months, maybe twelve months, as Fauci's thinking it may happen, is not completely unreasonable, you know, it's it's cautious optimism, but I think there's a, there's a chance that's gonna happen. It's important because one of the things we in the United States will not be able to do is we probably won't be able to travel abroad without getting vaccinated. Because one of the things that most other countries will not want in their airspace or in their country is someone from the United States who clearly could be a carrier, unless there's testing results, you can show that you've been tested or negative. So vaccines are gonna be really important for US citizens as we think about moving forward, at least outside of the borders of the United States. So where are we with schools? And I think this is an interesting question, because some stuff just came out yesterday, that's kind of I think it's turning over very quickly, but so we don't know where we are, we're gonna be in the fall. Some schools have decided not to open, to stay completely online, like the, what California State University said, we're just gonna do all, all online. All the schools, like in order name, and others decided they're gonna open, and we'll figure this out by social distancing and all this. We don't know where we are with schools. The CDC guidelines have not really been particularly instructive, and there are two studies that came out yesterday that are, are, I think, raising some concerns about whether we want children to go back to school at this point or not. One, it is something that we've known for a while, is that children do get infected. Most of them, a very small percent of them show symptoms, some of them very severe. But most of the kids that get infected don't, don't show symptoms, they're, they're fine. However, a, a larger portion of them could be carriers, as asymptomatic carriers, and can pass or transmit the infection to an adult. Now, one of the things about transmitting is dose response is really important. So the sicker you are, the easier you are to transmit to someone. So if you, if you're asymptomatic, it may be harder to transmit, we're really not sure about that. We don't have evidence to back that up or not. So it may not be as much of a problem, but we don't know. What we do know, and the two studies, one was published in Science yesterday, and the other one was released by a German research group that decided to release it rather than publish it because they, they needed, because the publication process is so long, they wanted just to get this information out. Both of those showed that there have been children, a child-to-adult transmission from a child asymptomatic child to an adult. So this, I think, is an interesting issue that schools are gonna need to deal with. Because one of the issues that, when you set up your, your, like, like what you're doing in California, when you're setting up your regional opening process, what you have to look at is the community transmission rates. So when you look at your community transmission rate, you have to decide whether it's high enough that a child could potentially be at risk of being infected or not. And maybe there's sufficient herd immunity, or maybe there's, there is no infection there. So there are things that the community will need to think about when they think about whether or not they would wanna introduce a child into a classroom where the child may one be at risk from adult, or the adults may be at risk from the children. Things that they will need to do, it's clear, at least at the beginning of this opening, that children will need to have all their vaccines taken, that would include particularly measles and chickenpox. Social distancing and masks will be required, that we'll need to have some sort of setup where the children will have not be able to be together in ways that they have been together before, and they will need to wear masks. There'll need to be a system that can report illnesses rapidly, so if a child is sick when they get up in the morning, that parent cannot bring their child to the school, that parent has to report the child, and something has to be done to determine what the, the course of illnesses. And there probably will need to be fever checks or things that, that triage students, when they come into school, like, they'll probably be in the workplace. So this whole issue of whether kids go back and when they go back, what community they go back and so forth, I think is still something that's being kind of understood, better, debated. So as I said, some states just decide to do it on their own, they don't use CDC guidelines. Again, we, we see in those states infection rates going up. So I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns here that will be with us for a while, through the, through the summer. And I was just gonna talk for briefly about businesses, but I think you probably already know, I mean, certainly essential workers all had to go, like, none of them left, all the doctors and nurses and food and transportation people stayed. I mean, they didn't leave their jobs, a lot of the non-essential workers who left. They're coming back into the workplace is gonna be a challenge, because it's going to restructure some of the environment, but also the way that they interact with themselves, their colleagues, as well as with their clients. Hotel, I mean, restaurants is a great example of that. How do you now access a restaurant is gonna be dependent on where your community transmission rates are, what social distancing looks like in that community. I know in Maryland or DC where we are, they just opened the outdoors, so you can sit outdoors, although you're kind of a distance away. The plan is for next week, they're gonna start opening up some indoor space, that's a little bit different. Everybody's on, you know, on a mask, we've always been on masks in DC and Maryland. Waiters are in masks, they're actually using iPads, they give you an iPad to order, so they don't have to come to your table to order. So there are different things, I think, that will probably come up in businesses as they try and figure out how to work their way through this period of time. We'll just sum up by saying, most important things that we can do collectively as a community is, is one, to social distancing, it is here for the summer, if not longer. I think we need to figure out culturally how we can be apart comfortably and yet not wreck ourselves socially and communally, right? But social distancing, wearing masks, making sure you're aware of, of just where you are, like the places you touch, the places you go. If people are coughing around you, just being aware of that and, and, you know, kind of thinking about that a little bit more intentionally. And then, in a real big way, don't touch your face. Wear your mask and figure out how to tie your hands around your waist, because the two big modes of transmission is breathing and touching. Surfaces can be, but, but we know the virus dies relatively soon, within seventy-two hours or so on surface. But this transmission from something to your mouth is actually quite, quite large, like we thought before. So those kinds of practices, I think we need to figure out how to make them attractive or sexy or appealing, or I don't know, you know, how to make a mask look like something that's pleasurable, I'm not sure how to do that really. But those are things I think they're gonna be with us at least through the summer, if not into the fall, if we do find ourselves going up to a second cycle. Then we start back over again, and that would be really hard, I think, on all of us to go back into the scenario of lockdown again. Do get your flu vaccines or other vaccines that you, you need to get, particularly given the age of this group, so just be aware of that. Okay, so I'm gonna stop, did I go over fifteen minutes?
Thank you. My mask makes my glasses steam up, so please find an alternative for me or some solution to that. Anyway, it's, this is wonderful to hear firsthand, some of the things that we have heard, but this reinforces it for us, so thank you very much. Do you wanna go on the, the chat and see what questions that people have raised that you might address?
Okay, I'll just go. Okay, so from John Casper to everyone, so
who sent it in?
But you sent it to everyone, so everyone can see it. Okay, so what's with our inability as the US to do more widespread testing? Great, so great question. So we don't have the capacity. So we did not plan from the beginning to either within the production of the tests, nor the diagnostic capability of taking the test and doing it in the, in the lab itself. So unfortunately, this administration started off probably three or four weeks behind, and has never really been able to catch up. And, and actually, I think it took a little bit of a misstep at the beginning, where it only wanted to test symptomatics. And it didn't, it didn't do community testing where those symptomatics were. So it missed a large group of people that were probably transmitting the disease that they could have identified, done contract tracing on. And so it's an issue of response and planning relative to what is a basic public health practice, which is testing and contact tracing. So I don't know if I can say anything more, that's, that wouldn't be overly political, but they, they they did not have all the mechanisms in place that needed to be to, to put this level of a national response together. Your speech of school, so I, so I spoke to school openings in September, I, I think, unless you want more than what I said. You mentioned that eighteen to forty-four-year-old age group, please go back over that. Okay, so if you think about, so I wish I could share this with you. It, in the graphs of you think about where in the demographics that's collected for people that do report positive on a test, one of the demographics is age, right? So there are different age groups, and the way they break this is zero to seventeen, eighteen to forty-four, forty-five to sixty-four, sixty-five to seventy-four, and greater than seventy-five. So what you're trying to do is you're trying to see which age groups seem to be the ones that are getting infected. Now, again, this is not community testing, so basically what you're seeing are people who come in to get a test. So this is probably more symptomatic testing than community testing. So, but it does in some ways parallel where you're seeing a lot of transmission. So you see most of the tests being in the positive test, coming in that age range of eighteen to forty-four, which means that it's not unusual, but it means that, that there's a lot of community spread, because that's the age group where people tend to move around a lot. You know, you're working, you're running with the kids to the soccer game, you're doing what, you're whatever. So it's, this is kind of indicative of what we would consider kind of a community profile for a community spread. If it were something different, like, so for example, if it was a SARS response, you would have seen it much more narrowly in a very particular community, like an elderly community or something like that, where the numbers would have been much higher for populations that would have been at risk, particularly the elderly on that one. Okay, so just want, that's, I hope that's kind of clears it up, it's not a great explanation, you know. Okay, should we get tested if we don't have symptoms? As we get out more, should we get test period? So that's a really good question, and a lot of people ask this, you know. I think at this point, if you are in a risk group, a high-risk group, I would recommend getting tested. And interestingly, it CDC hasn't said that directly, but if you've been kind of following things that have been happening, like marches in, in Washington or wherever. Barbara Edfield, who's the director of CDC, came out this weekend and said, if you've been marching, you should probably get tested, because we wanna know if you've been infected. Which says to me, I mean, you can extrapolate that, it says to me, if you're in a risk group, if you've been, you know, somehow affiliated within a community where there's been active community spread, or you're older, and there's likelihood that you probably would been, you know, in the presence of someone, and I know I have certainly multiple times. I would recommend getting tested, I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to do. Getting retested, again, I think that you, that would be a little bit more specific to whether you think you've had some sort of an exposure. And that, just to kind of follow that. In order for you to get a vaccine, I suspect most people will wanna get tested. And I suspect that the, that the criteria to getting a vaccine is that people are tested. So for example, so I had to get, you know, traveling, whatever, I had to get all my hepatitis tests, vaccines, so I had to get all my hepatitis tests done before I got my vaccines to see whether I've been exposed or not, because you wouldn't wanna give your antibody, you wouldn't wanna give a vaccine to someone, whoever has immunity. You'd be wasting the vaccine. So, okay, you were trying to point out Johns Hopkins info saying that California new infections are increasing, yet you have not included California, the states that are increasing, is there an explanation for the difference? Well, they are, but you know, they're, so you have to look the, the long. So California is actually kind of plateau. It increases in the week, but it will go down again. So what I tend to look at for whether something's increasing is that, is that a trend over time? And California's not trending, California's actually kind of a plateauing. I think, but there are peaks in it, and you'll see that certain weeks it'll go up and certain weeks it'll go down. So you can look at the CDC data and kind of figure that out. I don't think it's inaccurate to say it's going up at, at times, but it's going down at times as well. So I tend to take a more average or median view of it. Okay, one of, one of the major findings over sixties, what are the main things we over sixty can do to avoid becoming infected? Well, I think everything that I've already said. You should limit your exposure to the public. If you are in public, you should wear a mask, you should social distance, you should wash your hands often. If someone is ill around you, you should move away. When you come in the house, you should wash your hands again, wash your face, all those things I think would be very helpful. If you're over seventy or seventy-five, I think it's probably more important, if, again, looking at your community transmission rates or your community rates itself, infection rates, I would probably stay in and only go out if I absolutely needed to. I think that the mortality rates for individuals over seventy-five are extremely high. So that would be my, my recommendation. So I have been carefully isolating my son and myself from my in-laws. They have a household of six adults, one is on, one is an air stewardess and continues to fly, but I've been told she is regularly tested, I don't feel comfortable visiting them, especially since they've had some outside visitors, am I being unreasonable? I have a weak immunity system, and my son has been has been have, has been have going, ongoing wheezing, comes the spring for the first time. So I don't think any of that is unreasonable, I mean, it sounds like you are, you know, being cautious enough. I think the things that you may wanna do so about with your in-laws is maybe express some of those concerns. Particularly if it's a, a relationship that you wanna be in, there's ways to create protective bubbles. Then we have started looking at creating these family bubbles, where you kind of agree as a family that you're going to have certain practices, you're gonna see certain people, you're gonna behave certain ways in order for when you come back together, everybody feels comfortable in that relationship. So I think if it's something that, if it's a group or individuals that you wanna be in a relationship with, I think it's important for you to talk about practices that you often agree on. And, you know, maybe visitors shouldn't be part of that right now, because of your, your own concern about your own risk factors. Or maybe everybody should be wearing masks when you're around each other or something like that. But I think it's important to talk through those things so everybody can feel comfortable with it. As I said before, if you feel that you need to get tested, I would, and you're clearly in the risk group, I would get tested. I don't, I wouldn't hold back on that. Is there any wisdom on how long the protection of the vaccine will last, how often? So we actually don't know. And so, we, so two things, we don't know, once you're infected, if you develop an immune response, which most people will, how long that immune response will last. So we know currently for regular flu, it doesn't last, but, you know, in a couple of months, it will certainly. I get the flu one year, doesn't mean I'm not gonna get the flu the next year, and vaccines kind of function in the same way. The immune response from a vaccine kind of tracks along with a regular immune response of your body. So, so that's why we get flu vaccines every year, with hepatitis is different. We don't have to get it, but every ten or fifteen years, or even, I think it's even a lifetime now. I just got my Vericel Zoster, my my shingles, shing, shingrix, and that's almost a lifetime. So I think it will depend on how well this comes, and the vaccine comes, based on the immunological response that we're gonna have naturally in our bodies. So big question mark. Was this, when statistics indicate a greater risk over regarding risk factors increasing over sixty or seventy, do the numbers lump those healthy groups with those in confined, long-term nursing care, or have these groups been studied separately? Great question. So it, so there is some studies that are coming out that are specific to these subcategories. But we don't know much about them at this point, right? So I would, I would, at this point, so we lump, we do a lot of lumping, we're not doing a lot of splitting. So I think the splitting is going to start happening shortly. What we do know from the nursing homes is that we're seeing for those that are infected and develop severe illness, there's like a twenty percent death rate there, which is extremely high. So, but we don't know if the person didn't go into the nursing home, if they just stayed with a relative at their house or whatever, whether that, and they got infected with that would have been the same or not. So I think we're, we're still kind of a little far from that, but hopefully that'll get cleared up. So that, just also say the CDC is really producing more statistics. They're now requiring additional reporting elements when they report a COVID infection. There are new factors that you have to report on. Some of that is specific to where people live, who they're living with and so forth. So hopefully some of these things will become clear as we, as we move forward. Okay, could you speak to travel, whether via car, train, plane, and lodging? So let me talk about a plane, maybe that place to start. So we've traveled before in epidemics. And what we've, and actually flu is a good example of it. So a couple of things that we've learned is the things that we've talked about, social distancing is to try to stay apart. And I know that some of the terrifieds now have every other seat. And mask is important, the type of mask is important. So we know that ninety-five is probably the best, the most protective. The surgical is second and a cloth mask is third. Many times you can stick a surgical into the cloth mask. They have the inserts, which makes it more effective. But I would say that if you're going to travel, you should try to use one of the more effective masks if you can. Washing your hands and keeping your hands clean, even wearing gloves, because there's lots of surfaces that you're going to be touching. And then it's shown, it's been shown a number of times that sitting at the windows is a place that seems to be the safest in terms of transmission. So it's because I think the way the airflow is where the air is coming out from that, those ducts and then into the center. It's the, so the air is actually not being pushed to the, it's kind of coming, being pushed away from you. So those are a couple of tips to maybe think about. But I think clearly it's going to be, you know, masks, 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 you know, keeping your hands clean and, and social distancing as you can. We'll have to get back to travel. I mean, it's going to be really hard for us not to travel in the long term. And I think those are things that, that you'll see airlines doing more regularly. A car, again, you know, I would say that if you're on a long road trip, you know, try not to stop at a lot of diners or try not to leave the car as much as you can. Obviously you need to get gas, wear your mask, wear your gloves, just be careful and know the community that you're going into. It may not be as much of an issue when you're driving out to way out into the, you know, somewhere in a way that's more rural. But clearly within, you know, jurisdiction where there's a number of people and it obviously has infection there, I would be more cautious. Thank you, thank you, thank you. If you are resident of Conde Coste County Health Service, says you can now get tested without symptoms. There you go, okay, right, so you saw that?
Great, John, I'm, thank, this, this is great, thank you. It, it, there's a ring of confidence, you know, in, in hearing you. And, you know, somebody that's involved intimately in it. You did tell me that Dr. Bricks is your boss.
I was her deputy for seven years.
Good.
That's why, that's why I look this old. Actually thirty-five.
So, yeah, no, thanks very much. And, and the questions that were asked, I think are very, you know, that's what's on our minds right now. And this, this helps. I mean, you know, maybe you'd be willing to come back again sometime and, and talk to us. John has been out to Lafayette a number of times in the Bay Area. I would say it's one of your favorite places, isn't it?
It's definitely one of my favorite places.
Right. Next week. Well, first of all, I want to ask Sandy Gritzer if she would make that announcement regarding the food collection. Can you unmute yourself, Sandy?
I will do that and I'll be real quick. Just to remind, if you weren't at the nine-thirty liturgy, I made a little announcement. But this Sunday, the fourteenth, between two and four, we're going to have a drive, drive up drop-off or drive-through drop-off of, for food for Monument Crisis, a food drive for Monument Crisis. A social distancing guidelines will be followed to keep everybody safe. We'll have four volunteers, they'll be masked and wear gloves and, and move the food from, if you can put the food either in your trunk or in the backseat. And we'll, we'll get it out of there and move it, and then you can go on. There's no need for you to get out of the car. It'll be quick. And the, the items that they're asking for are peanut butter, pasta, unsweetened cereal, ramen, canned or packaged fruits, canned vegetables, canned tuna or chicken, and brown paper grocery bags. So, but again, don't get out of your vehicles and, and it's at, it's at the hall on the far side of the church. So the new hall, just outside, you'll just drive by there and there'll be four of us there to help, help you with your, your donation.
Thanks, Sandy, and thanks to the Outreach Committee for being our representatives and to so many agencies that we support. But it's all, it's through your guidance of us that we're able to do that. A couple of other things. So as, as I mentioned last week, June fifteenth is when the county has said that cultural events and religious events can take place up to a hundred people at, but outside. Right now, I've been meeting with our faith formation and school staff. We have eighty kids who had to defer their celebration of First Communion. So if we do anything, I want that to be our first line of attack, if you will, because those kids and their families have been so eager. So if we can do a distance thing, celebration, maybe ten families at a pavilion mass outside, then seven or eight, you know, celebrations would be able to cover them. So that's where we're starting. Bishop Barber said that he is not getting people clamoring for returning to public worship. And no priests have been writing him and demanding or asking or begging of a return. And I think what John told us tonight reinforces that. You know, this Sunday is the Feast of Corpus Christi, the Body of Christ, and it has been so difficult. Next week will be three months, a third of a year that we've been in isolation and separation. I'm grateful for this gathering and for our Sunday gatherings. We're, we're able to see thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred other people in our community. I feel still connected, you know, very much. And I'm grateful to all of you who have used this opportunity and who have experienced your own domestic church where you found, you know, the presence of the divine and the presence of Christ in your own home. Next week, we need to address the topic of racism in America. And it's difficult in a community like ours. We don't have people of color or very few people of color. So I, I want to, next week, have the opportunity to bring together some people who can address us and encourage us and help us to know a little more clearly, how can we in our little bubble, social bubble of Lafayette, work to break down the racism that has created such difficulty? Not just the last two weeks, we're talking about a history in America. So Mary, Mary O'Leary, who's been a therapist and counselor and is, and is going to give us an introduction to the dynamics of racism. I've asked Father Aidan McAlhinan, who's the Irish white pastor of one of the, you know, big Catholic, black, American, African-American parishes in Oakland to be with us to talk about how that experience has, you know, changed and transformed his ministry, even his understanding both as a priest and as, as a white person. There'll be a couple of other people who will be with us again to expand our awareness and help us. If, if you've got a couple more minutes, John, I know that you were present. You lived just a subway stop away from the heart of Washington DC. And you were present at the rally the day following the clearing out of peaceful protesters in front of St. John's Episcopal Church that has raised so much issue. Kristoff, can you show some of those pictures? And John, if you wouldn't mind just commenting on your experience of, of being there, if you would, please.
So I, I've been a resident here of DC for about forty years. And so, and I'm very familiar with this area. Actually, my office is a couple of blocks away. So this is the first time that I've ever seen military and riot gear in Washington. Actually, when I walked, when I walked out of the metro, so there's my pastor, she's there with her. And there's her deacon next to her. She's pastor of our Episcopal Church. And our, our bishop, our Episcopal bishop spoke. It was a big religious rally we were having. And we were surrounded by probably about two hundred of these, of these riot police that circled us and wouldn't leave, let us move anywhere. It's an interesting experience when you come, particularly in a religious way, come to express your concerns about socially what's happening. And what happens with you is you're confronted by this militaristic. Some was, it was like a foreign, I've never experienced like, and I travel all over the world, you know. It was just like, it was like a military takeover of my town, which was extremely difficult. And I think a lot of us felt fairly strongly that what our president had done and the way he treated all of us. And it was not just the religious people there, but all of the protesters that I, that I was with that day. And I stayed there for two days was just so out of what was consumable or, or reasonable as an American citizen that we really felt disturbed by it. So I just wanted, maybe that's more emotional than anything. But we had about six thousand military or designated persons from various parts of the government, all of them were either military or like the DEA or Secret Service, the FBI, all in riot gear around the Capitol, around the White House, around the Capitol Building. And then another four thousand from the National Guard. So we probably had close to ten thousand milit, and they were all in riot gear just up and down the main streets, Constitution, Pennsylvania Avenue with, with their, you know, military trucks and stuff. So eventually I think our, our mayor, Marion Bowser, did what she could do to get them out. And eventually by Saturday, they were all gone, which then we had very peaceful and orderly march, tens of thousands of people. It was quite extraordinary with just a few police officers from Metro Police Station who've always been with us on marches. So it was, it was quite an extraordinary experience to be there and to see it. That's
Thank, thank you. That, that gives us a good entree into our gathering next week to help us to understand the, what we can do. I want to close just with a brief prayer in time of the pandemic. Almighty and merciful God, who shows your love to all creation. We come before you asking for a quick control of the coronavirus currently ravaging our world. Graciously hear the prayers we make for those affected by the virus in various parts of the world and in our own country. Grant healing to the sick, eternal life to the dead, and consolation to the bereaved families. We pray that an effective medicine to combat the sickness be speedily found. We pray for the relevant governments and health authorities that they take appropriate steps for the good of the people. We give thanks for the work of Dr. John Powell and others who are looking after the ways to protect people and, and help us during this critical time. Look upon us in your mercy. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Have a peaceful night, everyone. And again, thank you, John, so much for being with us.